This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, et sec., notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Need to approve some minutes, make it a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th for the Cal meeting and also the February 19th regular meeting minutes.
Orford, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. The city manager's report, Mr. Retino is not here tonight, he's on vacation, Mr. Arcostes filling in for him.
Thank you, Mayor. First this week, we started twice a week collection throughout the city. We had a bit of a delay in getting the printing of the notices, so this week we're actually collecting all the routes, both once a week collection and twice a week collection, while we're putting out the notices at the same time. So no one will miss a collection this week, but we'll actually have twice a week collection started next week, starting the 24th. We had the Wellness Challenge kickoff, that was on March 10th, then the first weigh-in was actually on yesterday, which everything went well. We had also the seniors St. Patrick's Day luncheon yesterday, which had a good turnout. For the DPW, we purchased a new piece of equipment, it's called a hot box for the asphalt to assist us in filling the potholes. You would get a better process with the hot patch. The summer concert series, we confirmed some concerts, July 4th, Time Machine, July 15th, the De Pries, July 22nd, the Infernos, July 29th, David Sidenyo Orchestra with the Latin Festival of Music, and August 5th will be the Filet-O-Sole. And also the progress on Hudson Street with National Water Main, cleaning out the sewers by Hudson and Kennedy, that's in progress and is continuing this week. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You have a listing for a public hearing on the Main Street Business Alliance, but I don't believe we're actually having a public hearing on that today. Right. There will be, we are-
No. Shame is like a public comment.
Yeah, we're going to be introduced, or we introduce and we'll be passing that budget tonight and there'll be available comment at that time.
Oh, no, she says we have to do it now.
You have to do it first?
You have to do it first before we approve it.
Okay. Okay, at this time I'd like to open to the public, a public hearing on the 2014 Main Street Business Alliance. Anybody?
I'll offer.
Orford?
Second.
Anybody would like to get up and speak on this budget? Please come forward, state your name and address to the clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Albert Dibb, I'm the executive director of the Upper Main Alliance. At this point, I would imagine that all of you have had an opportunity to look at the budget, the budget's been published. And for anybody who doesn't know who we are, I just wanted to mention that we have our newsletter here, it's available. If anybody would like to know what our organization is about and what we do, please feel free to take a look. The budget amount that we're requesting, the assessment amount, is the same assessment amount that we've requested over, I want to say, the last eight or nine years, so there's not a whole lot different in terms of the line items within the budget. We're looking to fund the same programs, grant programs, that we funded in the past, including awnings, facades, co-op advertising. And we're here to support businesses on Main Street and we're here to continue to support this administration's effort to get the rehabilitation fully realized. So on behalf of our board, we appreciate everything that you've done to further that cause and we look forward to keeping the ball rolling as we move on. Certainly if there are any questions about this budget, I'd be happy to try to address those at this time, but thank you very much for your continued support.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time from the council?
No.
Seeing none, thank you. Moving forward, resolution number-
We need to close the public.
Oh, anybody else in the public on this before I close it?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Victor Sasson, 261 Euclid Avenue, Hackensack.
Mm-hmm.
You know, seeing that the Main Street Business Alliance is made up mainly of landlords and developers are going to profit from the redevelopment of the city, I think it's a conflict that Mr. Dibb, the executive director of that group, is also, I understand, he's still a half-salaried employee of the city of Hackensack.
Correct.
And I think that, I think the city's ties with that group should be severed and the city should act independently on the redevelopment instead of, you know, facilitating lining their pockets with new development. The group has been in, how long, in existence, for what, 10 years is it?
At least. At least?
And look at Main Street. It looks like some, you know, it looks like a business district from hell. Empty storefronts, failing businesses. I mean, what do they have to show?
I-
For 10 years of work.
I'll let you finish then I'll comment, go ahead.
I think it's just really pathetic and I think it's, again, a conflict that he's on the city payroll and also the executive director of that group, which represents, again, private business people. There shouldn't be that kind of cozy relationship between the city and that group. Thank you.
I will comment on that if I may. I totally disagree with that analogy. We're in partnership with the Main Street Business Alliance, have been for years, they have financially supported the rehabilitation plan, they took the first steps to put it together with Streetscapes. They put a tremendous amount of money into Main Street through this budget that we're passing tonight. A lot of, a lot of good comes out of it. As far as the conflict about Mr. Dibb, I don't see any conflict at all with his job at City Hall and serving as their director. Actually, I think it's a good fit. Main Street would certainly be in much worse shape if it wasn't for the Main Street Alliance, there's no doubt in my mind. And that's all I have to say about that. All right? Thank you. Anyone else on this budget?
Steve Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place. I just have two or three quick, quick questions on the budget that's being passed. I'll direct them through you, you may be able to answer them, but I would assume that Mr. Dibb could answer them better. The facade grant program and the signage grant program, they seem to be rather underutilized. Is this a typical thing or is this just last year there were lack of grant applications or?
Through the chair, I'll allow Mr. Dibb to answer then.
Do you want to answer?
Yeah, sure. Try to make it as friendly as possible.
What we like to do is provide enough funding for those line items so that if somebody comes to us with a project that's worthy of support, we can fund up to $15,000 according to our criteria for each grant application. So if we have, as we've had in the past, two or three of those, you could see how you would eat up a good portion of that pretty quickly. And where those funds aren't used, they're rolled back over into surplus and we have it available for the next year.
Okay.
So this is really considered, it's kind of a subsidy to private businesses. It's, you're going to give maintenance to a landlord to put up a awning or something on their building?
Go ahead, sir.
I don't know that I would characterize it as, characterize it as a subsidy. Special Improvement Districts are, they've been in existence for decades, they exist not only in the United States, they exist in Canada and Europe. And it's, they're there to support businesses and by proxy to support the municipalities in which they exist. It's a tried and true public-private business partnership that's been working and there's nothing special that we're doing on Main Street, Hackensack, that hasn't already been done and continues to be done throughout the world, really.
And just one last item is, on here you've got $10,000 being budgeted for rent. You're a city employee, you have a city office, I mean, do we really need a separate office and give a landlord in town $10,000 of tax dollars for rent when, can you use City Hall?
We have an office at 238 Main Street, it's an office that's in the district, that's readily accessible to the businesses, property owners that are in the district, and it's much better suited for the purposes than any space. At City Hall, space is tight to begin with, but that's one of those things that we can always talk about in the future, about consolidating space. It's something that, you know, might be worth considering, but when I think about the files and everything that I have in my office now and trying to consolidate that with the space that I have here, I have a hard time seeing it, but who knows? I mean, it's, it's worth a look and it's something that we can look at in the months and years to come.
All right, because if you just look at it, 230 Main, walk right up Bana and you're at City Hall, it's a block.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak on this budget?
Hernan Chica, 82 South State Street, Hackensack. I don't know, correct me, Mr. if I'm wrong, it's an application for a business from last year, the International Bakery, which is in the process to open in these days. I believe the guy, there's almost $100,000 there, and it's the landlord, it's not the owner of the property. And I believe he has an application with members of the alliance going to go to visit the store and see how he did. He got some kind of help with the sign, but he still needs with the, with the renovations that he did in the property. So I think it's an application from last year, it's not solved yet.
Okay, I can't answer to that because that's, that would definitely be through the Main Street Alliance, maybe Mr. Dibb can?
Yes. International Bakery submitted two grant applications, one was for a awning slash sign and the other one was for a facade. We actually granted, off the top of my head, well over, I don't know, maybe it was, I'd have to go back and look, somewhere between $500 and $1,000 towards the awning slash sign. The building is not complete yet, there's no CO as far as I know. The applicant did not comply with fairly stringent criteria for a facade redesign. We have a committee of four members who look at those grant applications very closely to ensure compliance. And while I don't think there's been an official decision on that because the building hasn't been complete and there's still work being done, I don't know that that building would comply for funding under our facade grant program. But it's something, again, that we can look at.
Okay. If you would, please, Dibb, at least let the business owner know where they stand on that. Okay? Anyone else on this budget? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to close to the public?
Orford, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, resolution number 112-14.
This is resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 13-2014, which is an ordinance, amending ordinance 2-2014, Lot C redevelopment.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Orford, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 13-2014, as introduced, is now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April 8th, 2014 at 7 o'clock PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay. Moving on, resolution 113-14.
This is an introduction of ordinance number 14-2014, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain property, Block 308.01, Lot 3, commonly referred to as Lot C, owned by the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, New Jersey, not required for public purposes pursuant to NJSA 48:12-13 et sec.
May I please have a motion?
Orford.
Orford?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 14-2014, as introduced, is now passed on first reading and said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on April 8th, 2014 at 7 o'clock PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay. Moving on, resolution 114-14.
This is final adoption of ordinance number 7-2014, an ordinance amending section 17-17 entitled Retirement and Death Benefits of Part II, entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code. The ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. At this time I'd like to offer this, open this up to the public, may I have a motion, please?
Orford.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, anybody from the public who would like to speak on-
I need to do a little-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, at this time, anybody from the public who would like to get up and speak on this ordinance, this ordinance only, please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, I'd like a motion to close to the public?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to accept the, adopt the ordinance.
May I please have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Orford, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 7-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, moving on, resolution 115-14.
This is resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 8-2014, an ordinance authorizing and approving the city of Hackensack's vacation of a portion of the public rights of way identified as Kip Street and Lodi Street. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, may I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
Orford.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
At this time, anybody from the public who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward, state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close to the public?
Orford, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Need a motion, may I please have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Orford.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 8-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Moving on, resolution 116-14.
Which is an ordinance for final adoption of ordinance number 9-2014, a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of a ladder fire truck buy-in in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, appropriating $843,000 therefore, including a reappropriation of excess bond proceeds from bond ordinance number 22-2006 in the amount of $600,000, and authorizing the issuance of $231,400 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearing.
May I please have a motion to open this to the public?
Orford.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
At this time, anybody from the public who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step forward, state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close?
Orford, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
May I please have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Orford, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 9-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, resolution 117-14.
This is for final adoption of ordinance number 10-2014, an ordinance amending chapter 159 entitled towers and wreckers of Part II, entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code.
Okay. May I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
Orford.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
At this time, anybody from the public who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, please.
Good evening, Richard Sulkin, Hackensack, New Jersey. I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
There's a rotating list, is this going to be open to everyone who's a licensed tower in the city? Right?
I believe it is, Mr. Sulkin. I know there was problems with the rotation in the past when I can recall.
I'm assuming that the police director or the traffic division has had input on this. I don't know what the right answer is, I'm just saying.
Mm-hmm.
It's a matter of meeting the criteria, I believe. Yeah, my understanding is that the police director worked in conjunction with people on his staff with the city manager to craft this ordinance with advice from council.
Okay, so if it's, if there's 10, 12? I'm just saying, I think the traffic division always wanted it finite because with the lot, it gets a little bit unwieldy, but if they're on board, okay, thank you.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Slemling, address 83 Zabriski Street. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Today I'm here to speak to you as an elected member of the Executive Board of the Garden State Towing Association, on behalf of President John Glass, which is the leading organization in the state of New Jersey representing over 1,500 towing companies. I am also the general manager of Bergen Brookside Towing Corp., located in Hackensack. My name is Michael Slemling, as I said earlier, and I'm here to address ordinance number 10-2014. Bergen Brookside has been serving the city of Hackensack for over 20 years as a licensed tow operator. Hackensack, the county seat, is the most populated city in Bergen County with many major roads and highways either running directly through it or around its perimeter. There are three major issues in this ordinance that I must address with you tonight because if it's passed as it is, it will clearly affect not only the towing companies, but also the infrastructure of the city of Hackensack. First issue I must bring to your attention is their equipment requirements. As written, this ordinance requires one wrecker with a broom, a shovel, and a sling. I think that this may have been adequate in the year 1980, but certainly not in the year 2014. It's the recommendation of the Garden State Towing Association that a municipality should have a minimum of two flatbed tow trucks and one wrecker. It is my strong recommendation as an experienced tower for the city of Hackensack that these regulations should additionally include a heavy-duty wrecker. There are thousands of tractor trailers and heavy-duty trucks that pass through the city and around the city on a daily basis. For example, Route 17, Route 4, and Route 80 are all routes used in and out of New York City. Bergen Brookside has been summoned hundreds of times throughout the years by the Hackensack Police Department to respond to a tow or recovery of a heavy-duty vehicle that could not have been removed without using a heavy-duty wrecker. There have been and continue to be towing companies that have been granted a contract to be on the towing rotation, or a license, I should say, that do not have these necessary vehicles. I strongly believe that all companies must adhere to the state of New Jersey regulations and DOT requirements, some of which are permanently lettered tow trucks, properly lighted, the correct permits, and have all safety equipment. These all need to be clearly outlined in the ordinance and they currently are not. Second issue I must bring to your attention is the storage requirements. Part of this new ordinance requires reasonable and adequate motor vehicle storage facilities. Storage facilities requirements must be tailored to the individual town. For example, the need for storage regulations may be much different for the city of Newark than the town of Alpine. Reasonable and adequate is just way too vague for this ordinance. The Garden State Towing Association recommends that an ordinance should at least have the minimum, which is number one, properly lighted after dark; number two, proper square footage requirements; number three, an office on-site for the release of vehicles within the city limits; number four, a storage yard that has to be fenced; number five, a working bathroom; and number six, an area properly zoned for the storage of vehicles. These limitations would ensure that all vehicles are released adhering to the proper standard. The city of Hackensack should consider an owner of a vehicle that has been towed within its boundaries and how he or she is to get to the storage location. For many of these people, they must rely on public transportation, friends, or family, all during business hours, can be quite difficult if it's not set up correctly. The final concern that I must address with you is the city administration fee of $25 per tow. This ordinance is planning to increase this fee to $50 per tow without raising the cost. The city wants to decrease the amount to the towing companies while increasing the amount that will go to the city. As we are all aware, the costs of gasoline, labor, equipment, insurance, and property taxes have all increased and will continue to do so. I'm not okay with the city taking more money from the towers while the cost of the industry to run this industry has only increased. If this fee absolutely must be collected by the city, it should be the responsibility of the city and not the towing company. Instead of lumping it together in an administrative fee with the entire tow bill, we recommend adding it as a separate line item on the towing bill, which would ensure the consumer knows that he or she is being, what he or she is being charged for. An additional option would be if the city requires to get the release form from the police station and not putting, and paying the fee there, not putting that fee on the tower. Thank you for your time and attention, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address anything.
All right, thank you, Mr. Slemling.
You're welcome.
Any comments from the council on this? First, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? First, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
My name is Hernan Chica, eighty-two South State Street. I have a question. I'm not too familiar with this, but I have a conversation for a few of the residents in Hackensack. When you get into an accident and you own a house in Hackensack, did you allow to be the car towing to your house?
Yes, yes, true.
Because you're paying for it. Because I've been watching an accident where the guy went to tow his car to his house and they not allow him to tow the car to his house. They said they had to go to the pound. Forcing him to pay for extra towing to take it out of the pound and also whatever fits to the chart for leaving it there one or two days until he get it out.
I can't answer that now for you, Mr. Herman, but I will find out for you. I'm not sure, to be honest.
Because I mean, we should have.
I would imagine it would really depend on the condition of the car, if it's leaking oil or fluids.
Even if the car is now operated and it's been, it's my property, going to my property, and why who's, from there, we're just gonna wait for the insurance company to come and look at it. Even if it's not gonna be operated anymore, why should I pay stories to someone else when I have my property and bring it to my property?
I will look into that. It's a good question, thank you. Discussion on this? You may.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
This ordinance was drafted after the police department reviewed the practices of the city and they reviewed other ordinances that other municipalities have. Mr. Sleming has brought up some, I think, legitimate issues that may or may not be appropriate for the ordinance. My recommendation would be is that it be tabled so that the police department can look into these issues to see if they're appropriate or not.
I think that's a fair assessment, and we will do that. We will carry this till the next meeting. Thank you. I need a motion to carry this to the next meeting, please.
I'll offer it.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, resolution one eighteen dash fourteen?
That's a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number eleven dash two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance amending section forty-five A dash twenty entitled administration should create the position of municipal housing liaison for the purpose of administering the City of Hackensack's affordable housing program pursuant to the Fair Housing Act. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearing.
May I have an offer to open this to the public, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
At this time, if anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step forward, state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, I'd like a motion to close.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to adopt? Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, please.
Offered.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
You. Mr. Pataglia.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number eleven dash two thousand and fourteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Moving forward, resolution one nineteen dash fourteen?
That is the resolution adopting the Main Street Business Alliance two thousand and fourteen budget.
May I have an offer to open this, or may I have an offer to open this to the public, please?
Offered.
Oh, no, it doesn't have to, I'm sorry, we already discussed it. May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Moving on, resolution one twenty dash fourteen?
It is a resolution authorizing execution of contract with Bergen County for Open Space Trust Fund Project Cultural Arts Center Open Air Venue Endeavor slash Atlantic Street Public Park.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution one twenty-one dash fourteen?
It is a resolution awarding the contract for onsite municipal elevator inspection to Municipal Inspection Corp.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution one twenty-two dash fourteen?
It is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Johnson and Fashini Parks Biannual Certifications with Arcatis U.S. Inc.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered. Second.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Moving back, going back to one nineteen fourteen on the budget, I just want to verify something. It says adopt two thousand and thirteen budget, I believe it should be two thousand and fourteen budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a typo.
Just to correct that before we move forward. Okay?
Resolution one twenty-three fourteen?
Correct.
It is a resolution designating the registrar, deputy registrar, and alternates for the Health Department.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution one twenty-four dash fourteen?
Is transfers of two thousand and thirteen appropriation reserves.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution one twenty-five dash fourteen?
Is emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget per NJSA forty-eight colon four dash twenty.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Oh, are we, one twenty-six dash fourteen?
It is a resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to execute a stipulation of settlement for tax appeal captions one eighty-five South Newman Street LLC versus City of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution one twenty-seven dash fourteen?
It is a resolution authorizing the extension of a distribution system of United Water for Cedar Avenue.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution one twenty-eight dash fourteen?
It is a resolution authorizing non-fair and open contracts for real estate auction services to Max Span Real Estate and Auction Company to conduct auction and sale of real property.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution one twenty-nine fourteen?
It is a resolution authorizing cancellation of taxes and the two thousand and thirteen year-end penalty for twenty-six Elm Avenue.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And resolution one thirty dash fourteen?
Is a resolution for payment of bills. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts be and are hereby ordered paid. Current fund, seven hundred and forty-three thousand twenty-one dollars. Grants, ten thousand. Payroll is one million five hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Public parking, eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Capital is five thousand twenty-five dollars. Trust account is eighty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Total expenditures, two million four hundred and forty-seven dol, two million four hundred and forty-seven eight hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Intra-funds and transfers is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
May I have a motion to accept the bills, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Can we have a consent agenda?
Following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. It includes resolution one thirty-one dash fourteen, which is proclaiming March twenty-third through March twenty-ninth as Boys and Girls Club Week in the City of Hackensack. Resolution one thirty-two dash fourteen, tax refunds. Resolution one thirty-three dash fourteen, raffle licenses.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
Offered.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay. Time of night when we offer the meeting open to the public. Before I do so, I'm going to open the public comment portion of this meeting, but before I do, I want to set the ground rules by which the session and all future sessions of this council will be conducted. The public comment session of the meetings provide the public with the opportunity to make comment and ask reasonable questions of the governing body. This is arguably the most important part of our council meeting, and it should be treated as such. We take this portion of this meeting seriously, we ask you to do the same. Name-calling threats, basic accusations, or assaults on one's character, or ethnicity, or ethnicity will not be tolerated. Everybody gets five minutes. Anybody who would like to come up and speak, step up to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk.
Victor Sasson, two sixty-one Euclid Avenue. I'd like to know if the council is going to be starting any discussions with the Hackensack Hospital and the other tax-exempt entities in the city about, you know, contributing in kind in lieu of taxes. Literally hundreds of millions of dollars of property are not being taxed, and the burden on the homeowner is getting, you know, is increasing all the time. I'm just wondering if the city's gonna be talking to Bergen County. I mean, the police director already has Bergen County contributing in kind to his operation. It would be nice to see the rest of the city getting some benefit. For, for example, the president, the presence of the hospital, which has fundamentally changed that neighborhood and has close to two hundred million dollars in tax-exempt properties on the road. It would be nice to see the city do, I mean, the hospital do something like, for example, pay Prospect Avenue, which I understand the city doesn't have any money to do. Or maybe Mr. Mordaga could get a couple of police cars or something. I mean, it's really, it's getting to be a crushing burden on the homeowner. And the only, only other thing is Limone Marketplace, does anybody know when that closed? Is it two thousand and ten? Does that sound right?
It's at least two years. So, yeah. Could be. I'm not sure when exactly when it closed.
Does Mr. Dib know?
He's at Beckford.
I believe it closed about three years ago.
Oh, three years ago. Thank you.
Okay. Answer to your question real quick, Mr. Sasson, is yes, this council is addressing some of those issues. I can't go into details, but with a couple of different entities to try to recoup some, some money for the citizens. Next, please. Good evening.
Carolyn Davis, one ninety-two Stanley Place in Hackensack, New Jersey. He's not here tonight, but I want to, and some of you that are on the council now, or on the previous council, and you're quite aware of the struggle that we had on Stanley Place in trying to get a sign changed on First Street. I want to personally commend our director, Mike Mordaga. After three years of coming and trying to talk about that, when I spoke to him, I already thanked him personally, but I want to thank him publicly. He was able to, in one night, go down and see exactly what I was talking about. The sign that on First Street that was twenty feet from the corner, not fifty feet. And it took three years for me going through traffic and coming here. So I want to personally thank him. He went down, he saw it, and within a week, the sign was changed. I also want to say thank you to him and the police department for the recent drug raid. Having grown up as a teenager here in Hackensack in his sixties, born and raised here in Hackensack, I'm very proud of the city I live in. I want my future grandchildren to grow up in a town where it may not be drug-free, but I know that those who want to practice that trade will find that Hackensack is not the place to do it. place to do it. I want to thank him and the Police Department for that, and also for trying to build a better and committed relationship between the community and the police. I've spoken to several people who said they have noticed changes with the police, some of the police officers, and changes on part of the citizens. I think if we all do that and continue to work toward that, Hackensack will be the way it used to be, the way it can be, a city where, when the citizens go home, they can talk proudly about the Police Department, and the police, who may not live in Hackensack like they used to, can also talk proudly about the city they work in. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Yeah. My name is Kazi. I'm from Commercial Tire Service in Hackensack, in the Green Street. The reason I'm here today because of the property across the street from Pollo Flight Towing, he's using in the Green Street. He's got almost two acres, using it for $81 a month. And I was one of the person we bid on the property. I bid $4,500, and he bid on it $5,099. And for Eddie Carrion, he bid $5,700. And we haven't heard anything yet. We don't know what's going on. We don't know why he steal junk on the property, why he steal oil in the ground on the property, and nobody's acting anything on it, and they let him break the law every single day. Hackensack City given him permit to tow for the city without using the property, without CEO, throwing oil on the property, doesn't pay property taxes, doesn't pay insurance. He's getting it all for nothing. Parking on every spot, it says no parking on this side, parking next to stop sign. Breaking the law every hour, every minute. When I call the police, they don't act on him immediately. But when he call on me, they act immediately. For example, yesterday, the fire department came to my tire shop. They want to close my business. Before they enter my property, they says you are on violation. I says, you want to close my business? Go ahead. But the violation is across the street from my property. I think you came to the wrong address. And this is what's going on in Hackensack. And for the last six months, we are fighting it, and nothing been happening. I don't know what else we could do to solve this issue. For the last 15 years, I have pictures on that property. He's got trucks on that property without move, same spot. Thank you so much.
Welcome. I will comment on this, and I'd also like Legal to comment on this. As you know, we found out after we became elected officials that these city-owned properties had leases that hadn't been paid for for some time, I think back to 2002.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Properties were leased at numbers that were ridiculously low, like $80 a month. We moved forward right away as soon as we found out about this, and we're continuing. I believe we did put the property out to bid. I believe we are rebidding that property also. And I believe we may have started eviction notices or considered eviction for that property of Pollo Flight Towing. I'm not sure on that.
We commented at the last meeting, the eviction process is in the works, and it will be commenced shortly.
Correct. So this council has taken immediate action. Unfortunately, immediate action sometimes in government takes a little time, but we are moving on it, and we're moving forward.
Mr.?
Yes.
I would also respectfully request if the gentleman has any documentary evidence, pictures of issues at the property, that we kindly provide those to the city manager.
Okay. If you did. If you could present them to the city manager during the week. No, no, but if you could stop by the city manager's office with those, we'd appreciate that.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Name.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Council.
Your name, address, and phone number.
Before I begin, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say your presentation at the HGF Dinner was very, very nice and very deserving of those honorees and their contributions to the city.
I agree. Thank you. They were deserving.
Let me get to your taxpayer-funded press secretary, Mr. Amorato. I saw in the newspaper, as was uncovered by another city resident, which I find concerning, that nobody on the diets here this evening knew about Mr. Amorato's multiple jobs and how they place him in conflict with this city. The city of Hackensack pays him $78,000 a year, and I wrote the numbers down because I didn't want to make a mistake. County pays $35,000, pays him $35,000 a year. North Arlington pays him $21,600 a year. Senator Tools' office pays him $10,000 a year. And Assemblywoman De La Croce's office pays him $10,000 a year. My first question is, the Bergen County has about a million people in it, and the city of Hackensack has approximately 44,000 people in it. My question is, why are we paying him more than double for a lot less work if the county has nearly a million and the city has only approximately 44,000?
I'll let Legal answer this, please.
At this time, Corporation Counsel, City Attorney, has recommended to the city that they not comment on any issues related to Tom Amorato.
Is that because of the multiple subpoenas served because of Mr. Amorato's conflicts?
Sir, I'm going to repeat myself. At this time, the city has been advised by the city attorney to not comment on any issues related to Tom Amorato.
Can you tell me if any of the subpoenas are targeting the fact that taxpayer-funded money was used to support the Citizens for Change Facebook page?
Sir, I'm not going to repeat myself a third time.
Steve Kelber, 304 Clinton Place. Just first, I wasn't expecting to speak on this, but Mr. LaBrus, the past couple of meetings?
Yes.
You've opened the open public portion with a little, I want to call it a speech because I'm not being sarcastic in calling it a speech, because I do agree with and respect what you're saying. However, I've requested from the city clerk any record pertaining to a resolution or ordinance that would set your guidelines into effect. And I don't think, I'm not going to speak for him, but I don't think Mr. Morris would disagree with me that unless there's something formally, concretely put in place, you can't really just go forth and because the mayor says it, we have a new guideline regulating the public comment section of this meeting. And I've done my research. I completely agree that you can regulate the public comment section of this, but I would just recommend that maybe Mr. Morris go take a look at this and put something formal in place, because just you saying it is not really enforceable. What's up there is not enforceable. And if I wanted, I'm not going to tonight, but if I wanted to speak for more than five minutes, I would be well within my rights to do so. And I don't want to become the next Galena, and Mr. Morris would know who that is. I don't want to just come up here and do that. What I did want to talk about tonight, and Mr. Nudamacher addressed it a little bit, I've come to learn that New Jersey is a very large place with a lot of municipalities. And Mr. Amorato isn't just employed by the ones that Mr. Nudamacher mentioned. I don't think that the subpoenas that have gone out, and I, you know, I can't imagine what they could be looking for there. I don't think that that's going to prohibit or preclude Mr. Morris from commenting, which he was going to do regarding the conflict of interest that the county employment and the city employment would have. So I would, I would hope that he has delivered some type of report on that, which would become public to the residents. I don't think that one really has much to do with the other at this time. And the final matter that I wanted to address tonight, it's escaping me at the moment. Oh, at the closing of the last council meeting, Ms. Greenman made a comment regarding the council doing a great job because some people were coming here to tell them so, and the other people were coming here, and they were afraid or scared. I was just hoping that she could offer some clarity into what exactly she meant by that, because on the face, what she said, I take some offense to that. And I think that many other residents and taxpayers in the town would also take offense to that comment. So I would just hope that you would elaborate and clarify for us what exactly it was that you meant by that comment.
I thought it was self-explanatory through your testimony.
To the chair. You want to explain?
I thought they were self-explanatory. People who know me knew exactly what I meant, and I thought you did too.
I don't, so I'm asking for, I'm asking for clarification.
I'm going to stand by my words.
That, that you're doing a good job because residents are afraid.
No. Residents are not afraid. People who complain, some of the people who complained complained because they were unhappy that we were producing great results. And they were afraid because we were exposing that they were not, when they were in power, they were not producing the kinds of results that we were producing.
See, now, that's a clarification. And whether or not I agree with it, whether or not anyone else of the residents agree with it, that's much more in line.
I'm sorry. I was, I was unartful in explaining it previously, and I appreciate you bringing it to my attention.
Absolutely. Because when I heard you say it, I couldn't imagine that that could have been what you meant.
No, I didn't mean it, and I appreciate it. I didn't mean it in the way that it sounded. Thank you.
Next, please.
Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. I think it's unfortunate that unlike boards of education, new council members are not required to undergo ethics training. I think the state ought to look into it. And I see, with all due respect, I guess, you're still married to your consent agenda. I'm not going to harp on it, but I will say this, that going back to January 13th, John.
Yes.
Had the clerk read the following resolution out loud. Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the following organizations be granted permission to conduct a raffle in accordance with the applications on file in the office of the city clerk. Raffle RA 2050, HUMC. Roll call, ayes. Bataglia, Canestrino, Greenman, Sims, LaBrus. Now, I think if the clerk had read that out loud, John, you would realize you should have recused yourself. And what you did, unfortunately, is you violated the local government ethics law. And you got to do better. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hernachica, 82 South St. Street, Hackens. What I had to say, I cannot say it in five minutes. That's the bottom line. And...
Do your best.
No, the, I would like to have an appointment to speak to the city manager, to Mr. Davis Sims. But I'd like to just introduce this part. I was notified by the acting director of the education department. In a sense, not myself specifically, but everything conditioned to me not being involved. The permits for the use of the Johnson Park for few organizations which I belong to then, I didn't hold because one of the organizations that I belong to owe money to the city of I had a meeting with the city manager, January 6. I explained today to him, I believe Mr. Ad was present, the city lawyer attorney was present, and I believe finances was present, Gregory Leosy was present, and only myself. I was not expecting to all these people to be there, but I went to a call. Someone made a call, and I went to hear what they had to say. Looks like if I'm being friend or being belong to organization where my friends belong, I being penalized, the rest of the people is being penalized. I think you know a little bit about this, Mr. LaBrus. Since it's more deep than what we, what I can say here tonight, I would like to make the appointment. My future appointment with the city manager is there this month, the 27th. I would like to have that meeting with you two gentlemen before that meeting, if it's possible. That's all my request. But I was very surprised. I was very surprised because the city manager is a new, is new city. And first of all, I will ask you how many of the city council will know me or the organizations where I belong to apply that. That decision was made by the city council? It was his own decision? Because it's kind of, it's kind of weird. And when the ladies say, or the gentleman was saying about explanation about the things that being done, and if these things are being done because people's scared or because... Well, I tell you true, I'm scared. I'll be honest. I'll be scared. I'm scared. Because I never, in 35 years that I live in Hackensack, own two properties in Hackensack, my best interest for the city council manager to do well because I pay taxes. That hurt my pocket. Okay? So if any organization, profit or nonprofit, owe money, I expect the city to act according to the law and collect this money. My message to the city manager was the debt, the debt was not denied, a payment's been being made. So to take that kind of action surprised me, especially when he doesn't know what the people he's dealing with. So if someone, or something is going out there, I should be aware or should be deal in different way? I don't know. But the only thing I can tell you is this. One of the organizations being existing for 45 years in Hackensack, doing a major activity, we provide, we brought a lot of people, a lot of business, a lot of spending business to this town, when this, it was not that many business in this town. Another organization I belong, it creates recreation to kids. What ladies say about kids being in truck in Hackensack be at least a place for race kids? Well, we had to keep them. When they, when they start becoming a man, we had to have something for them. It's not enough when they are just kids or they are in school. What happened after that? Did we have something? Oh, that organization is being providing that activity in the night times, as their colleagues, as their work. The other organization is the over 40. It's been, believe one of Mr. Leo Attagli brothers used to run that team. And when he decided to not run it more, we took it over. I took it over with another guys. Basically, that's all what it is. So it's all with the community involved. So I would like to, let me know what kind of you papers you need to identify, to differentiate, they all separate, and I bring it to you or to whoever persons I to do. But I'm scared.
Okay, Mr. Herman, your time is up. But why don't you, there's a bell over here. Please leave your contact information. You said you already have an appointment with the city manager coming up? For what? And you wanted to meet before that?
27.
Who did you want to meet with before that?
Anytime.
But with who? The city manager before then, or?
No.
So please leave your contact information there, please.
Peter Marcus, 65 Davis Avenue. I just, I just wanted to make a few remarks. I'm, I'm kind of a little concerned, maybe I shouldn't be too concerned, about this twice-a-week garbage pickup. I don't know how we're doing it without any incremental money being spent on it. It seems like last year, there was an issue. We experimented with it, I think, down in the first ward. There were issues with smelly garbage cans, too much garbage, the proximity of the homes down there, warm summer months. And it made, it made sense. And it was supposedly, you know, a test. But I don't know how you can extrapolate, you know, doing twice a week throughout the city on the basis of just such a small test. And without belaboring the point tonight, you know, with, with whether or not it's doable or whether or not it's going to pay dividends, obviously, it's just started, and garbage trucks are cruising around, there's no cans out, even people I told, you know, that they can put it out if they want to. When you get to the fifth ward, for example, houses are relatively spaced, detached garages, a lot of people keep their garbage in the garage. The cans are quite large. The city went through a lot of expense to get the ones that we pick up rolling. And now, the question is, do we really have the money to spend and the equipment and the manpower to do twice a week when it may not be necessary? And to the extent that it is necessary in certain areas, like, for example, downtown, where there's a high concentration of homes and close proximity of those homes, there's no reason why you couldn't map out a strategy that would involve that without spending money to broadcast that, the pickups throughout the whole city. A lot, a lot of my fellow residents have said that. They said, gee, you know, it seemed to be working well, you know, why are we going to twice a week again, you know, and there doesn't, there doesn't appear to be a need, you know? In some cases, obviously, there is, depends on where you live. So I would ask that maybe the APW sanitation, you know, would look into that a little bit more to see if there's a better way they could map out that sort of thing. The other thing I wanted to mention, I was here the other day to go to the tax office, and I'm never here during the daytime. I'm only here at night for these meetings, and parking is not an issue. I cannot believe that 90% of the parking lot behind the building and across the street is city employees only. And that just blew my mind. A lot of them were empty spaces, but it said city employees only. There was a police officer down there patrolling the lot, which you probably realize, and also marking the tires in the 15-minute areas. And I'm saying, well, if somebody goes into City Hall, it's not like they want to go here and love the place and are going to stay all day. They're going to do their business and get out. And I think just having 15-minute signs is probably not necessary. If it's being violated by people who are parking here and doing business on Main Street, that's a different story. And if you need somebody to patrol the lot for that purposes, maybe we can get a security person rather than a full-time police officer. But I see no need. I mean, I have a pet peeve with this from business where management had reserved parking, and all the poor hourly employees, you know, they fend it for themselves. We said, take those signs down, we're all created equal. And I don't think it would create a great hardship. I think there's adequate parking. Obviously, police cars need a special area, and there are some special needs, handicaps and so on and so forth. But I would say, you know, get rid of them if you can. Mr. Mayor, tear down those signs.
Thank you, sir.
As far as Mr. Amorato goes, I, I've been intrigued too. I said early on that he worked on your campaign. You know, there's nothing wrong with appointing somebody who you think you need and you want and rewarding them for the work he's done in the past. At the time, I thought the salary was excessive. Now that I see in the paper, I'm convinced that it is. And if you have to keep him on, and there's no legal reason why you shouldn't have to remove him, certainly something has to be done about his salary, in my opinion. The other thing, obviously without comment, is the fact that we pay taxes to the county. And I think with the work that the record has done investigating this, when it was first presented by Mr. Kelber, is the fact that for unaccounted time with the county, he has medical, full-time medical and pension benefits, something that should be a concern to the citizens in general, whether they live in Hackensack or whether they live in Lodi. So that's something I think that bothers me. It's something that you can't address right now, but I know it's in the back of your mind, and you're working on it. But I think it's only fair that even though, you know, a lot of us support you, and we still support you, that this is something you're going to want to take a, take a hard look at. And we have every confidence that you'll resolve it, you know, in the best way possible. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. The garbage, the garbage pickup, I know we, no, there's a few reasons this is being done. The actual cost is minimal. We came out to, it's basically fuel in the trucks, it's really not, there's no overtime involved. So it's not more manpower involved. And there are areas, I live, you know, in the north side of town, and mostly in the summer, I definitely need twice-a-week pickup. I've always complained about it. And I guess it really depends on how big your family is and, you know, how much you entertain or, and stuff of that nature. But we're going to, we're going to try it for now, and there's, there's, there's other reasons too. And I'll, I'll speak to you personally about that, if you'd like. But the parking lot, the officer in the lot is not a full-time But, um, the parking lot, the officer in the lot is not a full-time paid police officer, I believe, correct?
Well, Trey, he's a constable.
He's a constable, and he is not a full-paid, full-time paid. He's either out doing constable work or monitoring the parking lot. And, uh, and that's that. All right, thank you. Next, please.
Richard Funacek, one-twenty Meadow Street, Hackensack. Um, a couple of things. One, uh, I see a lot of times in Hackensack, and more and more and more people parking on sidewalks, and, uh, I don't know if it's why or how they're getting away with it. Chances are, it just happens not to be a cop around at that time, but I see it a lot of times, they're just doing it whenever they feel like, wherever you go. The other day I had, had to have a cop come to Van Wettering because somebody had parked, uh, right on the sidewalk totally, and they gave him a ticket, you know, and, uh, I couldn't find out who it was. Meanwhile, so much for that. The other thing is, these tow trucks you're talking about, is a suggestion, it's only a suggestion, but in the winter months, when you plow in the streets and you have cars all over the place and you can't plow the street, if the city owned a couple of tow trucks, they have tow trucks that will pick up a car from the side, it doesn't have to get in the front of the car. If you had a couple of tow trucks that run, that the city owned all year round, they can move these cars and the streets could be cleaned, then the car could be put right back where it came from. Because I know a lot of times when you come down the street, you just can't do a good job because, a, a job like you'd like to do, let's put it that way, because there's fifteen cars on a quarter-mile run that messes everybody up. But if you own your own tow trucks, you can do your own towing as far as even during the year. And I'm sure you could find a piece of city property, put up a fence and an office trailer, and just store them there and charge the same money that would be charged. And then put your contract for heavier duty trucks from the outside. You can't own everything, but it's just an idea that the city should make the money instead of, uh, getting a lot of aggravation trying to set up something that's a hundred percent right for somebody else. And that's just a thought. In the meantime, doing a good job. Take care.
Thank you, sir.
Lance Powell, three-nine-five Golf Place, Hackensack. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council members. Good evening, everyone. I was here on the fifth, and I posed a question to you, and you said you would get back to me, you didn't, but I figured you were busy, so I'm back to pose the question again. Uh, it's, it's, it's a question and a couple of comments. Sports should be left to the recreational department. City council members should not involve in the decision-making of sports that concern our kids in Hackensack. Uh, I feel strongly about that. If they are willing to contribute to sports, then it should be on a positive level, not a negative level. And I see a lot of that going on, and what is done cannot be undone, so let's move forward. But if you are willing to contribute to our kids, there should be no politics involved, it should be all negative things meted out to our kids. Another thing, the lights at the soccer field, I think they're very expensive to run. Do you agree?
Are they expensive to run? I know the cost per month during the soccer season, if that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Approximately.
Are they expensive to run during the soccer season?
It's reasonably expensive, yes.
Okay. There were times they were left running four or five hours on the turf field, gates were locked, kids, our kids were not allowed to use them, they were all herded onto the grass field, and the gates were locked, but the lights were burning. I don't think that's productive for the city of Hackensack. And I'm a sports fanatic, but I'm also a father, and I'm a taxpayer, and when I see that, it, you know, it just turns my stomach. And if council members are present, they should actually step up and make better decisions that this should not happen.
If, if I may jump in real quick.
Sure.
A lot of times these lights, those lights are turned on.
Yeah.
Scheduled ahead of time and actually turned on through the internet.
Sure.
So I don't know if that anybody was there at the time would have the manual, be, be able to do it manually, I'm not sure.
I agree.
But I do know they're scheduled ahead of time and they are controlled by the internet, so.
I agree.
If a game finished early and there was a half hour left, that light's gonna be on, I mean, that's.
I agree, but let me elaborate. The lights were on, then we should be using it, because our kids were there. They were all herded onto the grass field, and they were not allowed, they were not allowed to use the turf field. So if they're on, that's fine, then we should be using it, because that's what we pay for. And another thing, our, our kids in Hackensack deserve more, they deserve better. In terms of sports, sports is not just for fitness, sports is to develop social skills, and sports is to help our kids stay off the streets, stay out of trouble. And if you run sports, it should benefit our kids. You can't have sports benefiting ninety-five percent of kids from other towns. I did a public records thing, I signed paperwork, I checked into it with Mr. Greg Leosie, and it came back that these kids live in Upper Saddle River, Union City, they did not live in Hackensack. If they, if you run programs, it should benefit our kids. And if you have ground rules saying that these programs should benefit our kids, the higher percentage, then it should. Those are just comments from me. I'm advocating for our kids in Hackensack, and this will help to build better rapport, better human beings, and help our kids in the city of Hackensack. So if council members with expertise in sports are willing to help, then let it be positive and let it not be negative or detract from helping our kids in Hackensack. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. And I agree with you, Mr. Powell, I think our children should have first access to those fields at Hackensack residence over out-of-town residence, and, you know, I agree with you on that.
So it happened in the past, so I'm just saying, let's move forward, because if we're here for change, let's see some change. What is done cannot be undone, but I don't wanna see the same things happening to our kids and neglect our kids, then what are we paying for? Kids in other towns should benefit from their towns. Or if they come here, they should take a backseat to our kids. And I'm a strong advocate for that. I'm a medical professional, I'm a teacher, and I, I wanna see things done for our kids.
I don't disagree with you at all. But I, but the one thing I do disagree with is, I think this town has wonderful sports program that keeps hundreds of kids off the streets with a lot of dedicated volunteers and to say that.
No, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying.
Is not really fair to them.
No, what I'm saying is, the rec programs, we do have great rec programs. I, I endorse that, that's not what I'm saying. So maybe you misunderstood. I'm saying we do have great programs, but when you run after programs, after the rec programs.
Right.
It should benefit our kids, and like I said, I did a study on it, I ran a public records, and it came back that most of the kids were not from Hackensack. And that's a fact.
There are a lot of traveling teams in town, club teams, that use the fields and pay for the fields, and that.
I understand that.
Yes, they, some of the kids.
I'm just giving a suggestion that we should try to do more for our kids, I don't think there should be a problem with that.
No problem.
Trying to help our kids.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
You should always try to do more for our children.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Lynn Harwitz, Hackensack.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think it's the county's problem in terms of Tom Amorado and his employment, but I think it's our problem that we're paying him seventy-eight thousand dollars a year to do our PR work. I think that's an unconscionable amount of money, Mayor. It's a, it's a full-time salary for the city of Hackensack. We're not a wealthy city in the sense that we can afford to do something like that, and I think you really need to address this. I wish you would.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I just wanted to say that the St. Patrick's Day program yesterday absolutely blew my mind. It's the, um, Brownie de Sharif, Second Street Liaison. Um, it's the first time that I had attended one, I saw the whole full program, I was the unofficial door opener when everybody came, people in wheelchairs and canes, and I, I enjoyed the program very much. The children, the two young ladies that are going to London that did the Irish dance, and the four that are going to Canada, I think it was a wonderful thing. Um, to the man, I forgot his name, that just talked about the rec. Um, our rec board meeting this next month will be April ninth. Everyone, of course, is welcome to come with comments, because that's the place to come to voice your opinions about recreation in the city. We do have a wonderful program, there are a lot of kinks that need to be worked out with the girls, we're working on that. Um, it should be a phenomenal program next year. Things happen, people make mistakes, games weren't confirmed, but we are working on that. The competition from other kids from other towns, I welcome it, a lot of the parents welcome it. I know my grandchildren and my children, like I reiterated, I said this before, grew up on programs here in Hackensack. And if it wasn't for the competitive teams coming in and going out, they would not be as strong players as they are today. Um, so that's what I have to say rec, again, rec, April ninth next month. It's usually the, um, third Thursday or Wednesday of the month, I'm not, Wednesday? Um, but it's changed this month because of an issue. Um, I also emailed the, uh, council, but I wanted you to know that I'm going to address those emails that I sent you, so I won't address them tonight, I wanna be able to talk to the people, like in housing and different concerns that the seniors had. Um, I, I'm also the liaison for the seniors. So they had some concerns, I'm gonna wait to get back, you know, answers from the director, and then I will probably address them on the next council meeting. But you guys are doing a wonderful job, I don't care what anyone says. I've been here damn near sixty years in Hackensack, grew up, family's been, I've been an advocate, I'm not because I was appointed as a liaison, I advocate for anybody and everybody because I know that people, someone's gonna have to probably advocate for me, and sometimes when I call different people, they say, who are you? I let them know that I'm an appointed liaison, but more than that, it doesn't make a difference who I am. I've always advocated for people, I don't care who you are, I'm gonna advocate until the day I die. So you're doing a wonderful job, the sports are gonna be better, and I just want everyone to know that everyone is working together, the families, the children, the council, and we appreciate you, I know I do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else saying none, a motion to close to the public?
Offered.
Call call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBros.
Aye.
Okay, this time, uh, comments from the council. Mr. Pataglia?
Thank you for coming, and let's go one by one. The problem that we got with Club Colombia, right, there's an issue about the money that Club Colombia was supposed to pay the city for the festival that they doing for Shini Park. The issue was like, Club Colombia, for two thousand thirteen, they own twenty-six thousand dollars. For last year, I think they own twenty-five thousand dollars. So the city manager give the issue to the recreation director right now that not to provide any permit related to Club Colombia. Club Colombia paid ten thousand dollars, right, about a few weeks ago, and then Club Colombia again paid five hundred dollars. They still, they are in the hole like, maybe over forty thousand dollars. Agree?
Yes.
Okay. So now, I know that it's a, there be a confusion between the over forty thing that had nothing to do with Club Colombia. That problem gonna be resolved Friday, because I know, and David know, that it has nothing to do with Club Colombia, the people they do the festival at Fushini. And the problem with the club is even before, when the bill was eighteen thousand, Club Colombia paid eight thousand, and they forget about the ten thousand, that's been going on for years. So it's not like, uh, the city council, the new ones, we got an issue with Club Colombia. It's a money issue that the city manager dealing with that. Agree? Okay. Okay, let me finish it fair, then you can say something.
No, we can't comment.
Okay, so then we talk later. Now, we talk later, but you know that.
Hold on, we don't want, there's gonna be no back and forth.
But that's the truth. Now, the issue with the soccer teams, okay? The person that is from Upper Saddle River, right, is a person that come to the city like a five of his sons. He wanted donate to the city three million dollars to make the indoor facility. The city don't wanna make that deal, and that was a beautiful deal. He will put the money, three million, fifteen years, right, and he will rent to do some, like a rental programs, and the way he can get some of the money back. But that particular man, right, he give to the kids uniforms, soccer balls, equipment, and the mayor and Catty went to his facility because he built the facility, whether in Casta, the kids from Hackensack, they have been using the facility in the wintertime for free. So we exchanged hours with the outdoor fields, and he give us hours in the indoor field. It working out for the two groups, okay? He complaining about like, oh, we should be do more, we should be do this, we should be do that. That particular man offered to him soccer balls, equipment, the way he can do his own team.
That's not a complaint.
No, 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 let me finish.
No back, no back and forth, please.
Let me finish, you got your time. You got, you got your time.
That's not a complaint.
No, no.
It's a suggestion.
Okay? So we offer him.
Leo.
You're attacking me.
Let's.
No, no, I'm attacking you, but this is the.
Why don't you meet with him in private? All right?
I can meet you with you in private if you want to.
Right, but that's not professional from a council member.
But you got the offer that you can, we can give you everything and the way you can do your own thing.
All right.
And you can coach.
That's not professional.
Okay, so, ah, no more comment, that's it. But no, no right for you to say that, we don't try to help you.
I'll talk to you, but that's unprofessional, thank you.
Ms. Canestrino?
Yes, I'd like to also commend our recreation department and the, the students and the staff from the Hackensack High School that provided the wonderful St. Patty's Day luncheon for our seniors. Um, I think it, we had over two hundred, I was there, we had over two hundred people in attendance. Um, the, the students were absolutely wonderful. Not only did they do the cooking, but they also took the time to help the seniors, help them get around, serve them, and all with a smile on their face. I think that, you know, it really, uh, was a wonderful public relations thing for the high school, and, and the seniors were just delighted, and it looked like the students were as well. So I wanna extend that thanks back, I see there's some board of ed members here too, so extend that, um, back to the school as well. Taking a quick look at some of the highlights of tonight's things that were on the docket, there was a number of items here that were dealing with redevelopment. So just to go over them real, real quickly, a lot about Lot C, and this is very exciting. I mean, one of the things was an amendment to the, to the Lot C plan, and basically, there was another one here that is promoting, putting Lot C up for sale. So the amendment really was to get all the vagueness out, get everything specific, so then when we offer this for sale, we know exactly the criteria, um, the expectations of what type of project is gonna be developed there. And, and this is very exciting news. Also, on the agenda tonight was about the, um, using grant money or obtaining grant money to do the Atlantic Street Park here, uh, near the new cultural arts center, and I think that also was something we've been talking about, or the prior council did, and we've been talking about for quite a while, and that's very exciting to see that moving forward. Issues with the Alliance, I mean, there were some questions, some things that were brought up tonight. I mean, I have to say that I think the working relationship between the Alliance and the city council is, provides the foundation for this redevelopment. Um, I know the mayor and myself both attend the Alliance meetings, and it's a forum where we can discuss city priorities, and they can bring us the business perspective, not only from the business owners, but the property owners. And to move forward with any redevelopment activity, especially of the nature that we're, we're proposing, we need that partnership, it's extremely important. And I commend the Alliance and look forward to a, a continuing great working relationship with them as we move through this. And thanks, everyone, for coming.
Thank you. Dave?
Good evening. I wanted to address Mr. Powell. My biggest issue is, all of my kids are Hackensack residents who play Hackensack Kings of Basketball. My biggest problem is, once they get in the eighth grade, I got all these schools stealing my kids. I got two of the top eighth graders in the state of New Jersey that are gonna go to either St. Patrick or Roseau, and that's what really bothers me. either St. Patrick or Roseau and that's what really bothers me. Second, today, prior to coming to the city council meeting, I opened up over there at Riverside Square Mall, it's National Art Month to this month and go out and see some of the displays that the kids have drawn and created, it's, it's beautiful. It's on the second floor, right, right outside of Bloomingdale's and you'd be amazed at the work that these kids accomplished. Thank you.
Ms. Greenman?
Good evening. I just want to thank you, everyone, for coming. Can't wait for the spring to arrive, it's been promised to us, I think, for Thursday night or is it Friday? So I'm hoping. I just want to reassure everyone that no one should be scared of us. I think we're doing a terrific job. We appreciate everyone coming and bringing their concern here. Think some people unfortunately only come to complain when we respond, they're not here to listen. So they are come, they complain, but they're not here to hear us out. And that's an unfortunate situation. We are respectful of everyone. If there is any misunderstanding, we always willing to hear you out. If there is anything that we can help you with, if there is anything that we can solve for any resident, we're here to, to do it. Whether it can be done here in the open, during our open sessions or by making an appointment with us and bringing your concerns, if it can be solved, we're here to solve. If it's a, an issue with your organization that was done differently under a previous council and it's not done the same way now, well, then we're going to discuss it, but it's going to be done the right way. Even if the other council was doing it, it has to be done correctly and we're going to do it correctly. As far as bringing traveling teams, and I'm going to speak up for my council members, I think they're putting their heart and soul in working with the children and bringing traveling teams from other towns, other municipalities actually solves and, and does, it benefits the children in Hackensack because, you know, the same kids are going to go to colleges and live with children from all over the world and all over the United States. They're not going to remain here in Hackensack and they're going to get exposed to all those other children to just artificially to be, you know, concentrated and only deal with children here in Hackensack does not solve anything. Yes, we should, you know, encourage here our children in Hackensack to participate, but just artificially to focus only here and not invite other children to participate and work with other children and not go travel other places and bring other children here is not solving anything. Don't be scared of us. You should not be scared of us. And people who are scared of us are scared of us for reasons that have nothing to do with us functioning as council members. They are, are not happy with us because they did not get elected and they want to make sure to get elected next time. So they are artificially creating the situation and it has nothing to do with all you good people of Hackensack supporting us. Please continue to come, bring your concerns, don't be, don't be afraid of us. And we, I really appreciate you coming and I'm not going to belabor this problem anymore. Thank you so much.
Thank you. To reiterate what the deputy mayor said, the St. Patrick's Day luncheon yesterday was, was great. They had 250 seniors, they had a great time, they had bands, they had dancers. The food was excellent, as usual, the high school does a culinary arts program, does a great job and it was a good day, was, was glad to see it. One of the things we did mention tonight was, you know, we took some money from an issue years ago that many of us were involved in. There was some leftover bond money from something that we're trying to do down in Johnson Park. We're able to take some of that bond money along with a new bond and get this ladder truck for the fire department, which is well-needed. We've been borrowing from Garfield for quite a while now, we even, haven't even had a ladder truck of our own in a city with as many high-rises as we have plus a major medical center. We, we need this truck and it's really going to, to help us tremendously. Lot C, tonight we not only finalized pretty much Lot C, we passed, passed an ordinance to put it up for sale and a resolution for somebody to auction it off. And this is a, a great opportunity for the city. Not only does it put this property back on the, the tax rolls, which will help all the taxpayers with the ratables, we can really control and put on a really nice development on this lot. It's a gateway coming in from Bogota and it's a park right next to it, there's, it's close to the buses, it's, it's just a great location, so we're really looking forward to that. Main Street Alliance, the partnership has been working great for years, it's still working great. Everybody's on the same page. Kudos to them for what they've done on Main Street as far as the rehabilitation plan along with the DMR, with Fran from DMR, with his planning. They're doing a great job and you can expect to see some great things within the next year, not even a year, starting on Main Street. And with that, I wish everybody a safe trip home, all right? And let's get some warm weather going, please.
Yeah, closed.
We're closed.
Dave, 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 Dave.
We're closed, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.